All right, good morning. I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is Thursday, March 13th. And we will begin with our public statement read by Commissioner Jones.
We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people, regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We believe in diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Great, thank you so much. I forgot to note for the record that all three commissioners are here and present in the Nat U Hill Room. We'll now move on to department updates. Begin with the Health Department.
Good morning, Commissioners. As of March 11th, emergency department visits for COVID-like illness and wastewater concentrations have decreased. Flu activity is still high across the state. The CDC now reports a total of 222 measles cases within the United States as of March 6th. Measles is an illness caused by a virus that spreads easily from person to person. Since it's caused by a virus, antibiotics do not cure measles, and there's no medications used to treat measles. Two doses of the vaccine are 97% effective in preventing measles and providing protection for life. Our public health clinic has vaccines available. You can call 812-353-3244 for an appointment.
Great, thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, have there been any measles cases in Indiana?
None that I am aware of.
Commissioner Medeira?
I don't have any, and I do believe the measles outbreaks are spreading, and that is of grave concern. And so Indiana does not always or has generous exemption requirements from vaccines, and that's particularly dangerous because we rely on herd immunity. So thank you for this information, it's invaluable.
Thank you so much, Ms. Kelly, appreciate it. Next, we have an update from Ms. Myers, Rural Transit. Good morning.
I'm going to print my name because I always forget to do that. Yes, Chris Myers with Area 10 Agency on Aging and Rural Transit. So I just wanted to give you an update for the quarter, but it actually will be reflecting all of last year because our operational year and our grant year is January through December for the transit program. And we should actually be getting a renewal grant sometime soon, later this month, so we'll come back to you for that. So for Rural Transit on the 5311 program trips, remember, we have a four-county service area, and that we had total trips of just over 45,000, 45,096 trips in 2024, of which 18,633 were from Monroe County, so about 42% of the four-county area. That is an increase of just over 5% from the year before. So we are still continuing to see an increase in demand for rural transit. That does not include the urban area, which of course we had to segregate out in 2024. So for the urban area, we had in January through December an additional 6,090 trips. And the split, the end-up split for that was 45 or 47% Elletsville and 53% of outside Elletsville, but Monroe County in the urban area, without going into all those details. I was able to work with INDOT and their consultant. It took a couple months later in the year last year to get approval for what's called blended trips, so we could use the 5311 purchased vehicles as well as the electric vehicles, and then vice versa. And so we go through a lot of dog and pony show of calculations and trips and passenger miles I won't bore you with. But if you ever want to see those spreadsheets, I can share them with you to come up with a net each month of how many times we used a publicly funded or subsidized vehicle for an urban trip and vice versa. And the net cost of that gets charged out to those programs. So there is an additional cost one hitting one of those programs, and it is always the urban. Especially over the winter because, you know, we have less efficiency with the electric vehicles over the winter. And just to give you an idea of that, in January of this year, the net was about $1,100 for that month. That was a vehicle use charge for the blended trip use that was hitting the urban area cost. So that may, you know, over the course of the year mean that the cost per trip is going to go up for that urban area than we originally thought it would be, and I'll keep you posted on that. But I just wanted to give you an update. And I did, when we closed out the 2024 urban area parallel route, we had about $2,000 remaining as a positive from what the real expenses were versus what the revenue. So we've rolled that over into covering this this year as well. We were, we had the pleasure of having our triennial review with INDOT in December. Angie came and represented the commissioners, so we appreciate that. And we, you know, passed with flying colors, and that was a lot of work on the staff. It's always a lot of work because there's a lot of compliance involved. But I wanted to officially let you know, if you hadn't heard that, that we had passed that. I think it's like 15 different areas of compliance, major compliance. And one of those is Title VI. And so we did update, and that had nothing to do with the triennial, but we were scheduled in January as well to update our Title VI plan, which looks at, you know, people with language efficiencies and challenges that might need to access rural transit. And we did update that, and it's been publicly posted on our website where we had an increase in the Spanish-speaking population from Monroe County. So they now are in the safe harbor threshold. So we now have all of our documents that are not just in Chinese, but is in Spanish as well. So that's it for my update. Do you have any questions for me?
Great update, thank you. Commissioner Medeira, questions or comments?
I think it's really important when you're breaking out the trips to realize that rural transit is not just to rural areas. It is also, trips to Elletsville also fall under this umbrella, and I think often it gets glopped under the rural transit category, but it needs to be separated out. That's very important. Thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I'm just interested to hear that ridership is up significantly. And I hope that that will help us improve rural transit and make it more available to more people. Challenge.
It is a challenge. Really grateful for all the hard work to make the, what they call, the urbanized areas accessible for transit for folks. Really appreciate that because I know it was a hurdle to get there, but the ongoing calculations you have to do and all of that, it's greatly appreciated. So please, thank your staff and a great thank you to you because that's a big task. And it demonstrates your care for the community that you took that on. So thank you for that. All right. We have other departments to present an update for us today. You can come to the podium or raise your hand on teams. All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to our proclamations for today. This first one is a proclamation in observance of National Safe Place Week. Whereas National Safe Place Week will be celebrated across the nation during the week of March 16th to 22nd, 2025. The youth of Monroe County, Indiana, will determine the future strength of our country and will be the bearers of our democracy. Youth need a haven from various negative influences such as child abuse, substance abuse, depression, and crime. And youth need readily available resources to assist them when faced with circumstances that compromise their safety. Whereas the Safe Place Program is committed to protecting the youth of Monroe County, Indiana, offering access to immediate help and safety for young people seeking assistance and guidance.
And whereas designated locations where youth can get information and immediate help, Safe Place is founded, Safe Place is founded businesses such as restaurants, convenience stores, movie theaters, and community buildings such as fire stations, libraries, and public transportation vehicles. And whereas the success of Safe Place is based on public-private collaborations between businesses, school systems, fire departments, law enforcement, and a network of volunteers. The Safe Place Program must meet performance standards relative to outreach and community relations to receive direct federal assistance as set forth in the Runaway and Homeless Youth Act, 42 U.S.C. 55701. And whereas more than 1,700 communities in 39 states administer the Safe Place Program at more than 20,000 locations.
And whereas more than 405,473 youth have been helped at a Safe Place location or received counseling by phone because of Safe Place information received at school. And since program, and whereas since program inception in 1983, more than 18 million youth have been educated through National Safe Place Network's Safe Place Outreach Efforts, familiarizing them with the Safe Place sign and providing them with information about how to seek help to stay safe. And whereas increased awareness will encourage more communities to establish Safe Place locations where youth can readily access the help they need. Now therefore, we, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim our observance of March 16th to 20, through the 22nd, 2025, as National Safe Place Week, proclaimed this 13th day of March, 2025.
All right, thank you so much. We will move on now to our proclamation for Women's History Month. Whereas Indiana has a proud legacy of women who have shaped its social, cultural, political, and economic fabric, significantly advancing community progress. March is nationally recognized as Women's History Month, a time for us to recognize and celebrate women's pivotal historic achievements and contemporary contributions on local, state, and national levels. Indiana women have served as pioneers in fields as diverse as science, education, government, business, healthcare, agriculture, technology, the arts, and beyond, laying the foundation for future generations to thrive.
Whereas throughout our state's history, women of diverse backgrounds, Hoosiers of all races, ethnicities, faiths, and abilities, have overcome barriers to create positive change, working tirelessly to secure equal rights and opportunities for all. Whereas recognizing Women's History Month affirms our commitment to honoring the breadth of women's experiences, addressing pressing challenges, and embolden our daughters, sisters, mothers, grandmothers, and friends. Monroe County seeks to foster and safeguard an inclusive environment where women and girls can reach their full potential, supported by equitable policies and community initiatives.
Whereas civic engagement, educational programs, and community gatherings throughout March offer opportunities for residents to learn about notable Hoosier women and to reflect upon the transformative role women have played and continue to play in our society. Now therefore, be it resolved as follows. The Monroe County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims March as Women's History Month, encouraging residents, businesses, and organizations to honor the achievements of women in our state and beyond through appropriate celebrations, educational activities, and community events. And the Monroe County Board of Commissioners reaffirms its strong and unwavering commitment to community policies and initiatives that advance women's rights, well-being, and leadership opportunities, proclaimed this 13th day of March, 2025, by the Monroe County Board of Commissioners.
Great, thank you so much, appreciate that. Being the first all-female Board of Commissioners in the state of Indiana, we can't neglect to appreciate the history that brought us here. So appreciate that. All right, time to move on to public comment. Public comment is reserved on the agenda for items that we are not considering elsewhere on this agenda. You, each person has three minutes to speak. You may come to the podium here in the Nat U Hill Room or raise your hand on teams. Please give us your name and county of residence. Please.
Want to go first since I've already spoken? Since I'm here physically anyway, with the Area 10 Agency on Aging, I wanted to remind you and let you all know that it's the 40th Senior Games this year for us in Monroe and Owen Counties. So that's going to happen April 22nd through May 9th. And so seniors or older adults are welcome to register and go to area10agency.org. It's a whole lot of fun, lots of great activities, friendly competition. So some of them get pretty crazy, but friendly competition. You know, we'd have ping pong and bocce ball and disc golf and pickleball and all kinds of, you know, card games and things like that. So something for everybody. So I encourage that. And then the other piece quickly is every two years, we are the Designated Area Agency on Aging for our area. And that means in the state of Indiana, there are 16 different service areas. We are number 10, hence our name, and we are Monroe and Owen County. But every two years, we have to go through an extensive area plan process, and this is the year we get to do that. And of course, with the state administration change, there are some changes to that. And I've been neck-deep in that for the past month, but I've officially finished the draft and sent it out to the advisory council this morning. So we are going to meet next week, and it will be publicly available and available for public comment on our website and then also at the two senior centers in our office. So anyone who's interested could look at that. It's a state template, so there's a lot of formatting that I can't do and all kinds of other crazy stuff. But it does get to the heart of that core piece of what we are as a nonprofit, which is about serving the Older Americans Act work.
Great, thank you so much. As if running the Rural Transit Service wasn't enough to do. People forget you have this other job. Yeah, thank you.
Do a lot of, I like to say we do a lot with relatively little.
Yeah, you go. Thank you so much. Excellent. Anyone else? Looks like there's a hand raised. I cannot see the name. PSD, will you promote and unmute? Whoever is on teams with their hand raised, you can unmute, please. Give us your name and county of residence. I don't see a name on my screen. There we go.
There we go, all right. I was unable to unmute. Hi, morning, this is Aurora DiOrio with the Monroe County Board of Health. And I just wanted to give a little heads up that sometime in April, I think we have the date set, but it's not in front of me, so I don't want to misspeak. We're going to be hosting an event at the Health Department for council and commissioners to come over, meet staff, hear about what each individual office is doing, for example, environmental or disease intervention. And we are really looking forward to it. And then we're also going to present for, you know, for your discussion, for your information, what our priorities will be for a focus for 2025. So just please, please keep looking for that invitation and that date, and we hope to see everyone there.
Great, sounds like a wonderful idea. Thank you, and thank you for your service. It sounds like something we're going to have to notice as a meeting, potentially. Thank you. All right, anyone else have any public comment to offer for items not on our agenda? Okay, we will now move on to our next item, please.
Move approval of, move approval of the minutes for March 6, 2025.
A second. We have a motion and we have a second. Any comments, corrections, or edits? Okay, seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes for March 6, 2025, signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries 3-0. Next item, please.
Move approval of the claims docket, accounts payable, March 13th, 2025.
A second. We have a motion, we have a second. We have Ms. Gairbo joining us. Good morning.
Good morning. The accounts payable claims docket for March 13th, 2025 This includes all emergency claims and adjustments.
Great, thank you so much. Any comments or questions, Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Medeira? All right, any public comment on this item? Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the claims docket for accounts payable, March 13th, 2025, signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries 3-0. We did not receive any reports for today, so we will move on to new business.
Move approval of Republic Services Agreement Renewal. Fund name, county general, fund number 1,000, in the amount of $31,611.24.
A second. We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Kreider?
Good morning, Commissioners. Richard Kreider, Building and Fleet Manager. The contract for dumpster service has expired at the following locations: The Health Building, Courthouse, Community Corrections, Justice Building, and North Showers. Bids to renew contract were submitted by Ava's Waste Removal, Rumkey Waste and Recycling, and Republic Services. The vendor who currently provides the service, Republic Services, was the low bidder. This request is to accept a new 36-month agreement with a 5% increase year-over-year in the amounts of $10,027.20 for year one, $10,528.80 year two, and year three, $11,055.20, for a total of $31,611.24 across the term to continue dumpster and cardboard empties at the contracted locations.
Great, thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Medeira?
That would be a dumpster fire if we did not approve this.
So, so I have questions about this, especially with the cardboard, because we already use Green Business Network, but you said there's too much cardboard for that, to use that service.
They, there are multiple empties a week at the Justice Building. They accumulate a lot of cardboard. And actually, Republic Services has a, it's still being recycled. They have a processing center in Indy. So, yeah, and honestly, I think they've been doing this for a long time. So.
It gives me, and I appreciate that, and I'm glad it's being recycled. But it makes me think about what we might want to do at the, when we move to the new Justice Center, if we might want to handle this a bit differently. Because I'm sure that most of this cardboard is from food service.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, excellent. All right, well, thank you for getting this bid out and making sure that we got the best price we could.
You're welcome.
Thanks. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium. See, none. All those in favor of approving the Republic Services Agreement Renewal, signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries 3-0. Next item, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move approval of Reed &amp; Sons Construction Agreement Change Order Number One.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Whitmer?
Hello, good morning. This is for the project at Karst Athletic Complex. It's a project change for Contract One, Change Order One. Project change for Contract Two, Change Order One. Contract One is $18,406.73 change. Contract Two is $19,767.81 change. It falls within our contingency money, so the contract amount has not changed. FYI, I will be coming before you again with other change orders, but other than that, we're pretty on budget.
Great, excellent. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
Just congratulations, being on budget. It's not always easy.
It is not. Now, we are, we are going to add a very small equipment garage because this is very specialized equipment, and the garage will open up onto the field so we can keep the equipment clean. So that'll be coming forward, but I'm not asking you all to pay for that. We will.
Commissioner Medeira, comments or questions?
I'll join Commissioner Lee in saying not only on time but on budget, and that's all good news. Thank you.
Yeah, and just for the public edification, that you have a lot of information in the packet, which I appreciate. I was reading about pipes and all that stuff. But where are we, what is the timeline for the project?
In this document, we are going to be substantial completion date from August 1st, 2025 to October 1st, 2025. And that mainly is due because we added a third turf field. Our expectations have to adjust with that.
Sure, yeah. No, that's, that is pretty fast. That is pretty fast. Excellent. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You raise your hand on teams or come to the podium here in the Nat U Hill Room. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Reed &amp; Sons Construction Agreement Change Order Number One, signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries 3-0. Thank you. Next item, please.
Move approval of FNE Service Pros Service Agreement. Fund name, county general, fund number 1,000, in the amount of $4,095.
A second. We have a motion and we have a second. Treasurer Smith?
Good morning, Commissioners. Hope you're having a lovely day. It's always a pleasure to come before you and serve the county, serve you guys as the Board of Commissioners and serve the county, you know, people because it's just really glorious work to do, to help everybody. I just love that. It's a lot more fun being the treasurer than the auditor, I will guarantee you that. So what I, anybody knows me knows I'm pretty cheap. Try to get the best deal I can get going. And last week, I had asked you to give me another week on tabling something I had worked on because I thought I could maybe swing a better deal, but I'm just not going to be able to. So the, this contract is for scanning and running checks and bills through a machine to do it automatically. It works really great, and it's one we've used in the past. However, I know that there were other people who, you know, was interested in doing this. But when you looked at it, their technique and how they did it was not just more expensive, but it would have caused problems for us because we have a lot of renters. A lot of people rent property, commercial property here in the county, and they make Xerox, Xeroxes of their tax bill. Well, those tax bills, the knicker stripe doesn't work as you run thousands of these bills through. So it just makes more sense to have the scanner that you can click on the barcode. And after working with FNE Service Pros, they actually lowered the cost of their contract about $1,000. So I kind of hit our target mark, even though we've dealt with them in the past. And nobody else could even, was even half of that. So I'm very, very happy to present this and very happy that we can allow people Xerox bills and send them in and not charge like other counties charge a dollar to reprint those bills for it to run through the machine. So I don't want to do that. You know, I recognize that this is a large rental community. We want to serve the people that own the rental properties in the same good fashion that we serve people who live on their properties.
Thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Medeira?
Yes, I just, you know, nothing really to the substance of the matter at hand, but it's expenses like these, I think, that the state government just doesn't know exists when it talks about lowering property taxes. And it's either we pay for these services or we waste more dollars. And it's not a waste, but it would be critical. But it would be, it's more efficient to do it through mechanical means than paying people to do this work. And it's important work, it needs to be done. And I wish, Jess, that they had some appreciation of the minutia of costs that we have to approve in order to do the business of local government.
Thank you, I totally agree.
Mr. Jones?
I agree with Commissioner Medeira and don't really have anything else.
Yeah, no, and on that point, it's, it's, it's these kinds of. No, and on that point, it's these kinds of fees that will start mounting up for residents for things that we cover now. And I could see that in the future as well, which is not fair either, because those are unforeseen costs that they may be hit with. So thank you for working on this. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the F&amp;E Service Pros Service Agreement, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Thank you.
And I did want to tell you that we're in the process of getting the abstract approved. That is done through the Auditor's Office, but we can't print tax bills until that happens. They have to be okayed by the DLGF, and they have to be certified and verified. It's a long process. But it's so nice to have a team, auditor and treasurer team working close together to try to make this stuff run as smooth as possible. It hasn't always been the way in the past, but, you know, we're all just one big family and one big team here at the county, and it's always nice to tell people that, so that they know we're working together and not against each other. And I think that's very, very important.
Yeah. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item, please.
Move approval of the Indiana Department of Health Strengthening Prevention Grant. Fund name, STD Strengthening. Fund number 8112, in the grant amount of $289,909.
A second. We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Kelly?
Good morning again. So this is a new grant for our disease intervention services. So this grant award is expanding coverage to provide 16 counties for disease investigation services. This grant also will financially support three positions. We currently have two positions within the department that are filled. We will need to post one additional position and fill that position to assist in carrying out these services. But this essentially is just providing that free testing and treatment for sexually transmitted infections and HIV.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Madeira?
Just for the public edification, some people might be watching, I hope people are watching, and they might be wondering, why are so many counties included? Why can't these counties or why don't they handle these matters themselves? And I think it might be important for the public to know exactly how these counties come to be in the grant.
Sure. So, gosh, I wish I had, there is a map on the Indiana Department of Health website that shows, and I wish that I had that, I guess, to share. It shows which counties have local health departments that provide these services. But we are actually expanding to help cover coverage that was previously being covered by Marion County.
Thank you so much. This service is incredibly important, and I wish it got more attention throughout the state, and we're lucky to have a health department that actually cares about and is vigilant about these matters.
All right. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You raise your hand on teams or come to the podium. None, all those in favor of approving the Indiana Department of Health Strengthening Prevention Program, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Next item, please.
Move approval of Ordinance 2025-08 to amend Ordinance 86-09 and 86-06.
A second. We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Ridge?
So we are, I said, timing is everything. So we are wanting to amend 86-09 to delete the following 30 mile-per-hour speed limit, Duxbury Drive, Thames Drive, Wexford Court, and to add a 25 mile-per-hour speed limit to those locations, and to also add stop sign locations at Amber Drive for Kylie Court and Kylie Court for Harrell Road. These were presented to the Traffic Commission Board on 2/20/25 and was unanimously approved.
All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Comments or questions? Commissioner Madeira?
I have none. Thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
No, thank you.
All right. Any public comment on this item? You can raise your hand on teams or come to the podium. All right. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving Ordinance 2025-08, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. We don't have any appointments today, but I do ask folks to please check the information on boards and commissions on our website at co.monroe.in.us. Our next blood drive with Red Cross and Ivy Tech is at Shreve Hall at Ivy Tech, Wednesday, April 9, 10:15 a.m. to 3 p.m., and Thursday, April 10, 1 p.m. to 6 p.m. And that will be not at Shreve Hall, but at C-130A and B. Please make an appointment at redcross.org. Also a reminder, with spring weather upon us, thankfully, there are greater risks for severe weather, please sign up for our resident alert. Click on the megaphone on our homepage at co.monroe.in.us. And just a reminder that we do have office hours six times per month. You can check the calendar out on our homepage. Last but not least, as part of Women's History Month, Resilience Productions is offering a interesting, fascinating, remarkable women's series show, and this one is called An Evening with Judge Viola Natalio Ferro. It's written by Gladys Devane. The event will be March 27th and 28th at 6 p.m. and March 29th and 30th at 3 p.m. This will be held at the Monroe History Center. Tickets are $20. You may go to monroehistory.org or call them at 332-2517. And apparently, tickets are going fast. So if you'd like to go, we suggest you secure a ticket quickly. Anything else for the Goodody Order?
I have a couple of things. First of all, thank you for that. That sounds like a wonderful event. Just to emphasize, the grant that we approved today actually offers testing for ages 14 and under for sexually transmitted infectious conditions regardless of residents. And so, again, when other entities are not picking this up, many people might not realize that it goes that young, but children are sexually active, and we have to basically offer services that accommodate the needs of our residents. And so I think it's critical, and these services are not really being provided elsewhere. Also, thanks to the Health Department for its open house for council and commissioners. And this is especially key, as I saw in the news today, that Braun plans to eliminate considerations of environmental justice and basically bring us to the bottom denominator in terms of environmental permitting, and that's of great concern, particularly as we look at climate resiliency.
Thank you for that. We do have items for a work session. Can we come back at 5 minutes to 11? 10:55? Is that okay? Okay, great. All right. So we'll come back at 10:55. Thank you, Katz. Thank you, TSD. And we are adjourned until our work session. Thank you.